Okay.
Uh, Abby Chungith?
Here.
Rocky Spazato? Well, Rocky doesn't have a mic. Uh, Will Page?
Here.
Jack Helms?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Here.
Jackie Easley? Lisa Howard?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Carolyn Jensen? Francis Bogus? Greg Wadier? Greg Jones?
Here.
Rocky Spazato?
Rocky's on. This is Eric Lundie.
I see him.
Rocky's on, but I'm trying to work with him to get his mic enabled.
Okay.
I'm here, Tyler.
Thank you. So, Lab 9.
Okay. Um, alright, and I wanted to ask Commissioners that if for some reason you have to leave early, please just let us know through the chat so that Tyler knows for roll call and voting. So, well, welcome to the Plan and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to read the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body for the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the Commission other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Community Development Department staff at 515-689-9485 for details on council hearings. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. If applicants wish to share materials not already submitted with the application, please email them to planning@vmgov.org. So, a staff host may be able to share them on the screen when you present. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Staff has attempted to compile a list of people who would like to speak on each item. Staff will first call on these people, and then will open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. To request to speak during the hearing, please use the Raise Hands function on Zoom via the Internet or dial *9 on your phone. You will be required to give your name and address for the record prior to speaking. Also, we ask that you keep your microphones and phones on mute unless you've been given the chance to address the Commission by the Chair. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal if any opponent spoke. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. The hearing will then be closed, and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation as the staff reports, unless an individual present or member of the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations for individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Please know that typical accommodations may be limited by emergency requirements as issued by the State of Iowa and the City of Des Moines. So, we've had roll call. How about approval of the minutes from April 16th? Is there a motion?
Jack Helms moves approval.
Okay. All in favor? Tyler?
Greg Jones?
Yeah.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Aye.
Jack Helms?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Steve.
Carolyn Jensen? Greg Wadier?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Motion to approve for 16 minutes passes 10:01 with Steve Wallace abstaining.
Thank you, Tyler. The consent item. Um, Eric? Number one? It's my understanding that number one is going, is not going to be on consent.
Yeah. Sorry, my, my, my mic wasn't unmuting.
Okay.
This is Eric Lundie, Senior City Planner. Uh, my understanding is there's a Thomas Nichols to speak on item one, um, in opposition. He had contacted staff earlier, uh, this week to indicate that, and I see that he's on the call. I'm not sure he has capability of microphone. So, if he's got microphone, um, he should try to unmute.
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, we can hear you. So, so he's here to speak, so this would need to be pulled, uh, from the consent to, uh, be placed on the public hearing items.
Yeah, okay. Um, it's also my understanding that number four could move to consent. Is that correct, Jason?
Yes, Jason Van Essen, City Staff, uh, spoken, or have had communication with the applicant and the current owner. Both are in agreement with the staff recommendation and are agreeable to moving the item to consent. Uh, we had no response cards in opposition.
Okay. Um, is there anyone on the Commission who would like to hear this item? Do I have a motion?
This is Emily Webb. I'll move.
Okay. Thanks, Emily. Um, all in favor of moving this to, um, consent? Tyler?
Jack Helms?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley? Jackie Easley? Uh, Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Yes. Oops, this is Jackie. Sorry.
Thank you. Greg Wadier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yeah.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
And Will Page?
Yes.
A motion to approve consent item number four passes 11:0.
Okay. Um, okay. Great. Thank you. Alright, um.
Sir, Jan, I apologize. This is Mike Ludwig, Planning and Administration for the City. Uh, so that was a motion to move item four to the consent agenda.
So, now we have to vote on the consent?
Well, and if you're going to remove item one, that needs to be.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't understand that item number one, okay. Um, that we have to vote on that. But, so, Mike, just a question. We voted to move it to consent. Do we need to vote now to approve the consent item, or?
Yes, and state what item it is. It's just item four then.
Right, okay. So, uh, I'm, so we have moved item four, which is a request from Des Moines Area Religious Council, represented by Matt Unger for the following property located 100 Army Post Road. The subject property is owned by William Dapp. We have, we have moved that to consent. Um, now we're going to vote on the consent item. Um, is there a motion? I guess we've moved it consent. So.
Yes, so someone needs to make a motion, please.
Okay, someone needs to move.
Jack Helms moves to approve item four as a consent item.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Okay, Tyler?
Will Page?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato? Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yeah.
Greg Wadier?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jack Helms?
Yes.
Rocky, you there?
Yes.
Alright. So, motion to approve the consent agenda, item number four passes 11:0.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'd like a motion to move item one, which is request from Casey's Marketing Company, represented by Marty Beck for review and approval of a PUD final development plan, Casey's Door number 1192, for property located at 3200 Southwest 9th Street to allow development of the existing 21,664 square foot general food sales store with a 4,817 square foot gas station convenience store to include a pump island canopy with 14 fueling locations. The subject property is owned by Tersi. I'd like a motion to move number one to the public hearing item.
This is Will. I moved, uh, to move item number one in the consent agenda to the public hearing items.
Thank you, Will. Uh, Tyler?
Rocky Spazato? Will Page?
Yes.
Jack Helms?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Greg Wadier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yeah.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
So, motion to move item number one to the public hearing passes 12:0.
Okay, thank you. So, now we're on ni, item number one, and since I just read it, um, I'm going to let Eric, uh, present it.
Madam Chair members of the, uh, Commission, Eric Lundie, Senior City Planner. Item one is a request from Casey's for approval of their final development plan. You may have, uh, recently recalled their planned unit development rezoning, uh, going through. Um, so this is their development initiative now coming back for approval for the, for the final development plan. This will also go on to City Council. The property in gold is the subject property of the PUD and is, is the only thing included in the final development plan area. It's at the corner of Park Avenue and Southwest 9th Street. Uh, Park Avenue Elementary School is up on the northeast corner in this photo. I'll quickly run through site photos. This is looking from Park to the southeast across the site. More, more directly south. More to the southwest. Uh, zooming back, more directly south, uh, southwest, seeing the Save-A-Lot store. And completely southwest, and you can see the adjoining residential property to the west. Then, looking to the north along the east edge of the site, from the southeast corner. And then, panning across to the northwest. And then, looking straight west in between the, uh, the site and the commercial center to the south. Uh, in your packet was the site plan submittal. Uh, this was the, uh, demolition plan. The general site layout with the store essentially in the center of the site with the canopy to the east between Southwest 9th and the store. Uh, parking in front of the building to the east. Uh, two accesses to the north off of Park Avenue. Uh, one access to the southeast. And then, there's a little parking off the south edge right in this area, and then their trash enclosure function, and then their can, uh, receptacle for their recycling cans that they take in. It's right here. So, that loading area is right in this area. Uh, this shows kind of the grading. The site was sloped to the northeast. They're showing stormwater detention up in the northwest corner. Uh, the fuel tanks, I believe, are right in this area. Some trainee. This is the utility plan that shows storm sewers collecting from the site going to this, the underground chambers area and from, from intakes along the pump island area as well. This is the proposed landscaping plan. They proposed a, uh, class A sidewalk, oh, pardon me. They proposed a class A sidewalk along both streets with tree planters with overstoryed trees and shrubs or ornamentals where they're, uh, beneath power line area. Uh, perimeter landscaping on the interior of the site. Uh, I should point out that this east driveway on the Park Avenue is a right-in, right-out-only with a diverter in the center. Uh, they've shown their sign in this area. And then, open space landscaping in the rear where the main open space area is. They've shown two pedestrian connections from each public sidewalk to the front of the store. Then, the area, there's sidewalk around this area. They've shown bike rack area and, uh, seating area on the northeast corner of the building on the, out in front of the store. This is an elevation of the material. They're showing a combination of brick and stone material on the front and then, uh, panels on the, above the first story on the front of the store. That detail, the brick material wraps all the way around the building. You can see the screening mechanisms on the rooftop for screening of rooftop mechanical, uh, equipment. This is a elevation of the canopy that ended up getting proposed. If you recall, in the zoning stage that came in front of P&amp;Z, the recommendation was to do a fenestration with the canopy or an articulation that did something to break the expanse of the length of a linear, uh, pump island array. So, they chose to put a raised section in the center to, to meet that requirement. So, that, that portion is slightly higher, but in general, the canopy advised by the height requirements, uh, that were applicable to convenience stores and, uh, their clearance meets the required clearance on the underside of the canopy. I'm going to go right to the staff recommendations. We have a few, I would say, fairly minor concerns, uh, that we indicated in the staff report. Uh, we always want compliance with the Administrative Review comment, uh, based on the review of the plan in accordance with the PUD conceptual plan. We want the provision of public pedestrian easements in locations. There's a few little areas where the sidewalk area would encroach into the site, and we want to make sure that that's provided. Uh, we want insurance of a cross-access easement to ensure that the shared use of the southeastern driveway is available to the, uh, commercial center to the south. Uh, we want a signature landscape feature at the intersection of Southwest 9th and Park in compliance with the requirements of the PUD conceptual plan, uh, via the convenience store design guidelines that were in place at the time. Uh, we believe this could include a combination of things with grasses, uh, shrub plantings, uh, firming up of their monument sign on that corner. Uh, so, there's a few things that they would be able to do to make this signature landscape feature. Uh, we want to, it, it's our understanding there's an intent to have seasonal merchandise display, uh, but they didn't show the specific locations for that, so we want to make sure they're designating those merchandise display areas. And then, the submitted lighting plan, um, was almost perfect, except for there's a couple locations where they need to adjust to make sure that they're, uh, complying with the maximum two-foot candles uh, on property boundaries where they're across from, uh, commercial uses. I don't believe there was any where they were running into problems with the residential properties adjoining. I think they had 0.5 or less on all of those, uh, boundaries outside of those boundaries. So, uh, I think they're all mainly to do with the, uh, Park Avenue side. We got one communication from Thomas Nichols, uh, in opposition, who is a property owner to the south. Uh, he didn't give any detail to that, but indicated he would be participating in the hearing. So, uh, you will hear from him. Uh, that's reflected on the map. The consent map, uh, his property is down on Calder Avenue to the south and west of the, uh, proposed site. Um, I don't have anything further. My understanding is Greg Broussard's here from, uh, Bolton and Mank, representing Casey's and, uh, will be the applicant, uh, in this instance.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. So, you can see on the screen the schedule of how the hearing's going to go. So, is the applicant here? Is the applicant online? Does staff know is the applicant here?
He indicated that he would be.
Greg Broussard has raised his hand to speak. He's with Bolton and Mank.
There you go. Okay, Greg?
Yes, thank you, Commission.
Uh-huh.
My name is, uh, Greg Broussard. I work, uh, work for Bolton and Mank, and I'll be representing Casey's tonight.
Okay.
Uh, Eric, thank you for the great presentation. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to talk about beyond what Eric presented to the Commission. Uh, we're excited about the store, and, um, I guess I'm open for any questions that, uh, the Commission may have.
Okay, questions from the Commission? Do you want to raise your hand maybe if you have a question, or? Does anyone have a question?
This is Emily Webb. Are there any recommend, staff recommendations that you're not in agreement with?
Uh, no, we are in agreement with all the staff recommendations. Uh, all of them are, are definitely doable. Um, we are updating the lighting right now. Uh, we have finalized the seasonal displays, so we'll get those submitted to the city. We're okay with the landscape, uh, feature. The easement is already, it's a, it's a previously, uh, it is already an old easement on the property. We just need to get that to the city for the cross-access. We're okay with the pedestrian easement, and we will take care of any of the administrative requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Um, I believe, and anyone else who wants to speak in support of the applicant? Okay. Um, opposition. I do believe we have someone here who wants to speak. Thomas? You have five minutes?
Well, I believe there's enough convenience stores Southwest 9th. We don't need any more Casey's or Quick Shops or anything like that in our neighborhood. Um. Well, um, one thing is I'm also opposed to the way you're doing your meeting tonight. I've talked with other people, and they are not in support of this Casey's either. There's been a grocery store in that corner for decades. And what we need on the south side is another grocery store. Discount grocery store, so we're not forced just to go to Hy-Vee or Fairway. There's already a thing that goes by that I don't miss Save-A-Lot in the corner. And I believe that the city should try hard to, to find another discount grocery store to come in. I don't feel, I don't know what you've done to try and get another discount grocery store to come in, or if you've done anything. But Casey's, there's one on, um, Southeast 14th Street. There's one on Park Avenue, right down the road, that I can get to within five minutes of my house. And there's a, there's Quick Shop on Me Post Road. There's a cutting going on Me Post Road. 1066 South 3rd. Is Casey's intention to put these other places out of business on Southwest 9th, like the Quick Shop across the street from Lincoln High School? Or the 1066? Are they trying to put them out of business? So, instead of having one in the north, we have three or four empty stores on Southwest 9th? I don't see this as progress. I see it as turning a stop, uh, into a, a Quick Shop on every corner. There's another one on, oh, I believe it's, what is it? South Union and Watch. That, uh, they're expanding. I can, I, I think there's like 13 Quick Shops, convenience stores in a 10-minute radius of where I live. And another one just isn't a good fit for this community.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, like another minute?
Well, another thing, if it's going to be open 24 hours, it's going to cause distractions. There's going to be crime over there. If it's open at 1:00, probably get more beer and alcohol. If they have, uh, loudspeakers for their pump, it's going to be blasting over in my yard and in our neighborhood. And that's the last thing I want to hear at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning is a loudspeaker.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Nichols. Quest, um, Commissioners, questions for Mr. Nichols?
May I ask what's so great about the other Casey's on the south side?
Commissioners or staff?
Madam Chair, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator for the City of Des Moines. And for Mr. Nichols' benefit, unless requested to speak by the commission, you're not to address them any further until they've asked you a question, your five minutes was given. In response to a couple of comments or questions that were made, I want to remind the commission, this is a determination of whether or not the final development plan is consistent with the approved PUD zoning and concept plan that have already been approved by the council several months ago. And so, the debate about the use on the property was really to be made several months ago during that rezoning hearing to the planned unit development. And so, tonight, you're charged with making sure that the final development plan addresses all and is consistent with the approved PUD concept plan. So unfortunately, the debate tonight is not about the use on the property. I will also remind the commission that at the PUD zoning hearing and concept plan hearing, there was full support from the Southwest Ninth Business Group for the proposed layout and use on the property, and it was determined to be consistent with the Southwest Ninth corridor plan that was adopted as well by the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. That information is helpful. Any questions for Mr. Nichols from the commission? Okay, thank you. The applicant, do you want to make any comments? Okay, do I, now it's time for discussion.
Greg Broussard raised his hand.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm, sorry, I didn't catch that. Hold on. Okay?
I was just going to answer your question. We do not have any further comments at this time.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, I forgot to look at the hand. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, then the commission discusses this, there's no more input from the audience, okay? So I'm closing the public hearing, so it's time for discussion. Commission?
Rocky Spazato, all move staff.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you, Rocky. Tyler?
I have a.
Oh, Will?
I tried to raise my hand.
Oh, sorry. Will, go ahead.
I have a question for the city staff, please.
Uh huh.
I'm looking at the staff report on page number seven, under lighting, letter number C. It's talking about the canopies and lights on the canopies, and the last sentence says, however, accent lighting on the sides, quote-unquote, of canopy may be permitted, facias, lighting, accent lighting on the side facias of the canopy may be permitted. I'd like to know if on this particular proposal, if there are any automated lighting units on the facias, because we have seen in the past some convenience stores installing automated lighting. And so, my question is if there is any such design like that on this particular project? And then, the other question is, how does the city define accent lighting?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is Eric Lundey, Senior City Planner. This particular project does not have any separate accent lighting. The signs that would be on the canopy are internally lit. That design guideline was to allow for things like, you might see a neon band across the center of a canopy facia, for example. So it was put into those design guidelines with that in mind. Again, this project does not propose that.
Thanks, Eric. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Okay, thanks, Will. And I'm sorry I missed your hand there. We do have a motion, and it's to move staff. So Tyler?
Abby Chungit.
Yes.
Rocky Spazato. Bill Page.
Yes.
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 Jack Helms.
Aye.
Emily Webb.
Aye.
Jan Fried.
Yes.
Jackie Easley.
Aye.
Lisa Howard.
Yes.
Steve Wallace.
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen.
Yes.
Greg Wadia.
Aye.
And Greg Jones?
Yes.
Motion for add number one passes 12-0.
Thanks, Tyler. Now, we're going to go to, on the agenda, item number two. City initiated public hearing regarding proposed adoption of amendment to the approved zoning ordinance in Chapter 134 of the City Code relating to lodging short-term commercial rental uses.
Okay, I'm trying to share my screen.
Your screen, your screen's shared right now, Sue Ann. You need to hit the PDF back or back.
Thank you. Okay. So we're here today to talk about the proposed adoption of amendment to the approved zoning ordinance, Chapter 134 of the City Code, regarding regulations related to lodging short-term commercial rental use. So, brief presentation, virtual short-term rental amendment. Current operational requirements which were passed on December 16, 2019, owner occupant or long-term tenant occupant is required for a single household or two-household duplex and condominium use for short-term commercial rentals, may not exceed occupancy for 120 days a year if owner not present, unless the owner is present in any residential structure other than a multi-house, quote, address. One SRT per unit, a limit of 10% short-term commercial rentals in a multi-unit building.
Sue, Sue?
I mean, I can't see it.
Yeah, we cannot see it. Can you click on the PDF at the bottom of your screen, see if that, do you see that?
Yeah, that didn't help.
Did you so, um.
Let's try something else.
When you scroll down to the bottom of the, of the, of the screen with your mouse.
The PDF screen?
There's a little PDF logo at the bottom.
Right.
In the middle.
Yeah.
Can you tap that? Hey!
Hey what?
No, that's an inspection notice. Is that, did you just tap the PDF? Is that the inspection notice? You have to select which document you're wanting to share.
Right, and I, I'm trying to do that.
Okay.
Are you seeing current operational requirements?
No, it's showing Zoom on the screen.
This is Bert Ross. I could share the presentation if that would help.
That would help. Apparently, I'm having trouble.
Okay, thanks, Bert.
Yeah.
Let me just take next slide, Sue, when you want him to go to the next one.
Okay, there we go. Perfect, Bert, I will tell you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, we're, limit of 10% short-term commercial rentals in a multi-unit building, tenant occupant must have the approval of the owner of the dwelling to operate a short-term commercial rental. These are the current operational standards right now. A percentage of units in an apartment complex must have Board of Adjustment approval and must have a rental certificate. Next slide. Currently, we have no assembly use allowed, designation of an authorized management agent, limit noise to no more than the Allowed City Noise Control Ordinance. We have to give pertinent information to the occupant, like garbage pickup days, parking restrictions, snow day restrictions, emergency numbers, and a management agent number. And then again, contact information for the owner and the management agent should be given to neighbors. Next slide. So the pending proposed changes to the operational requirements have gone to council. They have continued the hearing and directed staff to bring forward additional items, but this is what is before them right now. No requirement for an owner or long-term rent tenant to reside in the structure of dwelling. Again, so then there would be no limit on the number of days per year, there's short-term commercial rental can occur. There's still the limit of 10% of short-term commercial rentals in a multi-unit building of 10 or more. Anything less than 10 gets one. We were, we lowered the standards of what the owner needs to collect for city. Now, we are asking for names, license plate numbers of the guest vehicle upon request. Must comply with all codes, including having a rental certificate. Annual rental inspection required. The rental certificate terminates in the event the Board of Adjustment broke the conditional use approval for a short-term commercial rental. A 10-year limit on the duration of a short-term commercial rental, at which time they would have to reapply to the Board of Adjustment for renewal. Next screen. So council asked staff to do some revisions. We took it back to them, and we were directed to amend what is before them and now before you. Owner occupied units are only required in the NX2A, which is the Sherman Hill District. There is a proposed 700 linear foot separation between units contained in a single-family household to a nine-household dwelling. No separation requirement if a Board of Adjustment application is filed by August 20th of 2020. They're required to have one off-street parking space per bedroom on site. Something else that didn't get included in the slide, but we've been requested to change the management agent age from 18 to requirement that the management agent be 21 years old. So this is just a copy of the ordinance in its draft form at this time. I am open for questions.
This is Jackie. I have, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I have a question about the Sherman Hill District being the only one designated as owner occupied. I don't remember the discussion around that. I did watch that portion. What was the thinking?
Council discussed whether Sherman Hill, at the request of Sherman Hill, should be treated to that, that ordinance, and just have everybody in that district be owner occupied, and that's what council directed staff to put in the amendment.
So no other neighborhoods requested that?
I did, I do not know of any other neighborhood that came forward to request that. I know that that was specifically requested by Sherman Hill.
Okay, thank you.
My presentation is complete, if there are no other questions.
Sue, one question. In your presentation, you referenced the 700-foot separation, and I just wanted to clarify, that applies to anything with nine or fewer units? Is that correct? Or is it?
Correct.
Okay.
If a, if a unit has, if you have 10 or more units in the building, the cap in the building is 10%, but there's no separation from that building to anything else. It's just separations in one to nine have to have 700 feet.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, I see Will. Will?
Thank you, Sue Ann. My question is about parking. According to what I understand, then there needs to be one off-street stall for each bedroom that is left in the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, will the compliance, would that be by complaint?
Most, most, most complaints are how we do compliance. They will be required to show that off-street parking space when they go to the Board of Adjustment. If it isn't, if it isn't requi, if it isn't shown on the plan that goes to Board of Adjustment, it would be up to the board to deal with that.
Thank you for explaining that to me, Sue Ann.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions for Sue Ann? Okay, thank you. Any, we have several people who want to speak about this, so if you'll just raise your hand, I'll call on you. Okay, Diane Graham.
Hi, this is Diane Graham. I'm at 635 46th Street. Thank you, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you, commission members and city staff, for the opportunity to speak. Since the start of the year, I've spoken out about the lack of residential neighborhood protections in this ordinance. I currently have three illegal short-term rental businesses in my little Ingersoll Park neighborhood, including one next door. I'd rather not have any Airbnbs in the neighborhood. I didn't expect a mini hotel business to be nearby when I bought my house, the single biggest investment I'll ever make, which is why I've urged both your commission and the city council to take steps. Okay, six steps to balance the scales between protecting this illegal, unregulated business and protecting the neighborhoods they've disrupted. One way to help do that would be to restrict the number of short-term rentals per neighborhood, known as density limits, just as the ordinance currently does for condos and apartment buildings. So I was happy at the April City Council Work Session when a majority of the council directed staff to ask the, as the concept of a step 100-foot separation between any whole house or small unit condo, apartment buildings running these short-term rentals. That wouldn't impact, impact the three in my neighborhood, but it would likely prevent someone from opening a fourth. What I strongly object to, though, is a proposal also before you to suspend that density provision for the end, creating a so-called amnesty to create. Anyone who applies for a permit in those first three months doesn't have to meet this. Stunned would be the best word to describe my reaction to this. After a council majority agreed in February to seriously consider density restrictions, after most of the council at the April Work Session sounded supportive of the 700-foot idea, they're basically pulling the rug out from under the neighborhood. They dangled the carrot of density protections and then stand ready to snatch it away for the first 90 days. So think about it, if I were going to jump through the hoops to become a legal short-term rental business, I definitely want to do it under the most relaxed rules, and as this stands, that would be in the first 90 days. If there were lots of changes that all help protect neighborhoods, I might feel differently about amnesty, but as you could see tonight, there are just a few. And for example, I still support banning absent owners standalone short-term rentals from our single-family neighborhoods. In city after cities, that's where the problems typically prop up, and yet this ordinance only recommends this for Sherman. only recommends this for Sherman Hill. About the rest of the residential neighborhoods, Ingersoll Park residents raised this earlier this year, so I just wanted to add that since Sue Ann mentioned that she didn't think anyone else had formally requested that. Also, granting a 10-year conditional use permit to run a short-term rental in a residential area is way too generous. The claim that this is necessary to get a mortgage loan is specious. I can't find another U.S. city that offers that kind of timeframe, and short-term rentals have certainly been growing in all those places. And lenders know short-term rental owners always have the option to go to a regular long-term rental, as some owners are likely doing because of the COVID situation.
Diane, two more minutes, two more minutes.
All right. The only other change is the requirement of one off-street parking spot per bedroom, and that's a step forward, but it's not going to solve the parking problems that come with Airbnbs, opening in our charming older homes with skinny drives that, for example, have three bedrooms but promise to sleep 10. So, why take the medias neighborhood protection and shell it for 90 days? If there are a few instances where a couple of existing short-term rentals are closer than 700 feet, the owner can seek a variance from the Board of Adjustment. Meanwhile, neighborhoods could still enjoy these protections as soon as ordinance enforcement starts. An overused comeback to our objections has been to say this is a living document that can always be amended, but of course, those amendments wouldn't apply to any existing short-term rentals they'd be grandfathered in. Another overused comeback, if there's a problem with a short-term rental, the Board of Adjustment can pull the permit, but that means the neighborhood becomes the snitches and would only happen in egregious cases and after lots of violations. Finally, we all realize Airbnb rentals have fallen in our COVID-19 world, but with the ordinance awarding a decade-old, decade-long use permit, we want to take the long view here, and so the time is right is now. Councilmember Josh Mandelbaum made a great statement in February. If you want neighborhoods to be more welcoming to Airbnbs, you need to give something to help protect the neighborhoods we love. That's what I'm asking. Help us protect the neighborhoods we love. This ordinance claims in its first paragraph to address the needs of neighborhoods. Please put some muscle in that phrase. Please vote to recommend that the city council adopt this ordinance without delaying the 700-foot separation rule. Reconsider the 10-year use permit and urge the council to keep its pledge to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Graham?
This is Jackie.
Hi, Jackie.
I would like to ask Ms. Graham, she expressed the view that the Ingersoll neighborhood wasn't supportive of owner-occupied, and was that a formal, was it made formally?
No, I can't say that because the Ingersoll Park Neighborhood Board hadn't really met in a long time, and we were in the midst of restructuring when this all came up. But we did have several people speaking at the council meeting in February.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Harley Hamilton, 678 Fifth Street in Des Moines. Perhaps some of you have stayed in Airbnb as guests, and thus you are viewing these regulations from a guest point of view, but what about the viewpoint of neighbors who for 365 days a year live next to or very close to these businesses? It's not just families coming and going at a short-term rental. It's people arriving for parties, or it's construction workers coming with large trucks and trailers that block the streets. The City of Des Moines State's units draft in the proposed ordinance that it warrants to address the needs of residential neighborhoods where these commercial renters occur, quote, "the preservation and improvement of the peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort, and convenience of its residents." See, that sounds good. Sadly, there is no ordinance that does that. I live close to an illegal short-term rental that has been run as a hotel. There's no owner or manager on site, has three bedrooms, but advertises that it sleeps 10. There are two other illegal rentals within one and a half blocks of my home. I have included photos that show some of the problems that can occur at one of these mini hotels, such as the sidewalk not shoveled, illegal parking, garbage strewn about. There are other problems as well. There's noise, parked in front of neighbors' homes, vehicles impeding garbage pickup, violating the snow ordinance. And even though some of these are constant problems, they may not be great enough for the city to close down this Airbnb, which is exactly why we need you and the city to put good, balanced regulations in place to protect, as the city states, the preservation and improvement of the peace, welfare, comfort, and convenience of its residents. The 700-foot separation between Airbnb homes is a welcome way to address density in the neighborhoods, but when the city decided to throw it out the window for 90 days by granting amnesty to those who get their applications in by August 30th, I was bewildered. This is one of the very few things that would have benefited neighbors, and now as it is written, it could be snatched away. Amnesty is not needed. Short-term rental can always ask for variance. And let me speak about the conditional use permit that lasts 10 years. There is not another city in the United States that we could find that grants a 10-year permit. A city council member said that it was needed so that owners could get a 10-year loan. This is deceptive. Every financial institution I spoke to says that the length of the conditional use permit has nothing, nothing, to do with whether someone would get a loan. The financial institutions don't look at this or require it. A person opening up a bed and breakfast or investing in a long-term rental does not get this kind of benefit from the city. Why are short-term rentals so favored and neighborhoods so disregarded? How does this 10 years affect the neighborhood? Remember, the city said it wants improvement of peace, welfare, comfort, and convenience for neighborhoods. Before a 10-year conditional use permit is granted, neighbors can speak before the zoning Board of Adjustment, and if the Board grants the permit, neighbors will have to wait 10 years before they can address the Board again. Now, some will say, oh, if it's a bad rental, then you can go before the Board before that, but there's no definition, no specifics, that let us know how bad it has to get before the Board of Adjustment will even consider looking at that permit again. And if the neighbor's complaints are not documented by the city because the city offices are closed, or the police don't get there while the violation is taking place, then what? How is this improving the peace, welfare, comfort, and convenience of a neighborhood? But here is how you can do that. Let all residents have a say about whether they want absent owners standalone in their residentially zoned neighborhoods. Ingersoll Park does want that. Amend the 10 years on the conditional use permit to two years would allow neighborhoods to see how the short-term rental business is working in their midst. Eliminate the amnesty for the 700-foot separation. The 700-foot density is one of the few regulations that protects neighborhood residents. Des Moines needs neighborhoods to be thriving so it can attract those who want to live here and work here and attend school here. Neighborhoods do matter, and I hope you will carefully consider how these recent regulations impact those who live next to and close by the short-term commercial rental. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we're going to look at the pictures.
Okay, this is a common occurrence all winter. This was a short-term rental in Airbnb that rented out, was rented out quite a lot. It had garbage problems, it had shoved its sidewalks, people parked in front of homes on our street that chose an illegal parking. This is somebody who, yes, we sure, people were at a short-term rental. Here's another garbage situation. All of these have been reported to the city, but I have no idea what is enough to get this declared that they can't do it anymore. They put the garbage out by the wrong day. They laid the garbage cans out for weeks at a time. They put garbage bags on the curb rather than inside the container, and the garbage would go all over.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Hamilton. Questions from the commission? Okay, thank you very much. I think we're probably waiting for questions when we get done hearing all the objections. So, thank you. I see a hand up, David Narleman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Uh-huh.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for your service and dedication to our city. I think we've come a long way since February, but in some respects, I think we may have overshot the target. In other respects, I don't think we're being strong enough. I just wanted to clarify, so I live at 1503 Center, and I'm a member of the Sherman Hill Association Board of Directors. I've presented several times to the council in front of Sue Ann Donovan, expressing our neighborhood's position, and we've sent numerous letters to the city, as well as, I know the city's received numerous letters from individual residents as well. So just a few points of clarification, I think, on Sherman Hill's position. Our boards always said we strongly support Airbnbs if they're owner-occupied. We have no concerns about owner-occupied Airbnbs in Sherman Hill, and to that respect, we see no reason to put a 700-foot limitation on owner-occupied Airbnbs. We don't think that's necessary. With respect to non-owner-occupied, we originally started a position where we didn't support owner-occupied at all, but rather in an effort to compromise, we were willing to accept the 700-foot limitation on non-owner-occupied Airbnbs, but applied to non-owner-occupied Airbnbs only. And we also agree with the comments that both Diane and Carly made about amnesty. Those that have operated Airbnbs illegally in our neighborhood for the past, approaching on a decade, we feel that they should have to go in front of the commission, and they should have to either get a variance or an exception on that 700-foot limitation, but this shouldn't be an opportunity for anybody to come forward in the next 90 days. We think that's somewhat ridiculous. As far as multifamily units, I think I'm generally supportive of what the staff has recommended, and we'll leave that up to staff. I think the staff is addressing parking concerns. I don't know that it's ever enough, potentially, if you have somebody bringing 10 people into a house, a three-bedroom house, but at least it's a step in the right direction. But I just wanted to clarify that the biggest thing is, you know, we don't feel you need to handcuff those that are owner-occupied. We're happy to have an owner living in a house, and if they need to rent a room out to pay the rent or whatnot, we don't think they should necessarily be restricted, and if we have dozens of those, we're not really concerned about it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. I think it's staff. Sue Ann, do you want to come back and talk about some of the issues raised?
Commission, Chair of the Commission, the guidelines before you were presented to staff at the council workshop. So that's the direction we were given. I would say questions, but I don't really have any rebuttal. Okay, well, this is Diane, and I do have a question. Listening to the concerns, I think 10 years does sound like a long time. You know, there are issues, 10 years sounds like a long time. Do other commissioners have a feeling on that? And I don't quite understand, you know, why the 90 days. I would like that to kind of be explained, but I think it should be raised. You know, if I were a homeowner, I definitely get the concern, and why is that raised? Commissioner, Chair of the Commission, I hesitate to speak for council. The thought process, I think, is that there were short-term rentals that were doing such a good job, but maybe within that 700 feet, that should be given, and they should come in during the 90-day period. That cannot happen in this area, it's difficult to guess. From a practical standpoint, for staff to manage those that are coming in to get a conditional use approval, it would be a rush to the door for comfort, or it's their application first, if they're in a situation that's difficult to manage from a technical standpoint. So although the 90-day period came up, it was a special task, it was a way for, I think, everybody to balance how to get people in the door, get them paid, get the approval, and then forward. But that's certainly the easiest way for us to manage it. And what about the 10 years? I mean, what was magical about that, or can you talk about the thought process with that versus the concerns that are being raised? Certainly, and again, I hesitate to speak for council. I was at the meeting where they discussed it, and they were trying to balance somebody's investment in a single-family unit, for instance, and the mortgage that they may have to take out in order to buy and renovate that and get a return on it before they would put it back into a single-family occupied or some other use. And the discussion ranged from five to seven to 10, and also landed on 10 because they were believing that, again, I'm paraphrasing, and I hate to speak for council, they thought that that was enough time to get a return on the mortgage investment that somebody would put into a property, and 10 was what they landed. That is not to say that if a property becomes a problem, that the Board at any time, or the Board of Adjustment at any time, a cost reduction can reduce that, and if I look at a use approval. Okay, thank you. Other questions from the commission?
Yeah, this is Abby. One of my questions, what violation is revoked in a conditional use? If there are multiple violations or violations that are addressed specifically? And also, what makes, there was, by a couple of the people we spoke, they referred to illegal short-term rentals, and I'm wondering what makes them illegal? And, yeah, okay.
Like, the dark answer is that as of December, before December 15, 2019, no short-term rentals were legal at this point. So when we started to grasp the problem, we started to look at how we're going to handle that, that kind of whole discussion started. So we started to look at the, how to manage that, and that's how we got here. I don't think there are any questions. Can you remind me of the rest of it?
Yes, the other question was, there's been talk about violations, can we revoke the conditional use? And my question is sort of around what that process is. Is it one violation, is it multiple violations, or a violation multiple times? Is it one violation, is it multiple violations, or a violation multiple times? What that process looks like?
Um, two questions, um, this is always tricky. If you have somebody who has allowed their residents to throw loud parties, they had to be completely, absolutely disruptive to their everybody, they take one party, one event, or staff has to take it back to, or adjust or reconsideration. It's a thing that probably brings up, I've lost the doubling the garbage out, we would have to build a case that shows multiple violations. Probably the outer time to, you know, here's the chance to make it right, to take it back to the board. It's building a case that's fully booked, standing up before, that's not, not standing up before the board, and it goes. So, it's not a black and white cancer. Unfortunately, I have to report that the way that we have to do it.
Okay, Will? I see Will has a hand up.
Uh, thank you. Getting back to your question about the number of years allowed, 10 years seems to be just a very long time indeed. It seems to me, frankly, that after a couple of years, if the property is not going the way it should be going, it's pretty clear that the property is not going the way it should be going. Five years seems to me to be something that gives neighborhoods more a sense of possible redress, and it also raises a question to the property owner as well, that 10 years is a long time, so I can play this out for a couple, three years anyway, and I don't have a problem. But if the five-year limit seems to be that a property owner could take a little bit harder look at how the property is being run, and that might be helpful.
Thanks, Will. Other questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And what was this got? So, what are you thinking? I know I can agree with Will, and sure, what Will just said, 10 years seems like a very long time if something's not going right. And then, staff said you really have to build up a case. We all know how difficult that is, build up a case, and it's not fun. So, that's what I'm thinking. What about the rest of you?
Yeah, this is Abby again. I would agree with that. I feel like five years is a good medium ground here, in that it would provide an incentive for the owner of the property to make sure that it's run well, and also a foreseeable future for neighbors to step up and say, no, we don't, we don't like how this is going. It does seem a little bit long for the neighbors, but two years just seems a bit short as well. So, I feel like five is about a good compromise.
Okay, thanks, Abby.
This is Jack. I don't know how to raise my hand. I can't figure that out on the screen today. I'm trying to understand the 90 days, the so-called amnesty period, and maybe I should have asked Sue Ann, and missed my opportunity to do that. So, I'm trying to figure out the methodology of application, the timing of the 90 days, how the neighbors are so concerned about that. I'd also point out that the photograph shown of the blue house with the garbage problem is a block from Mayor County's house, and that these two neighbors live in Mayor County's neighborhood, probably walk around the hardwood woodland circle up there from time to time. Thought that was a threat.
Thanks, Jack. Other discussions?
Somebody could fill me in, maybe that's for Michael.
For staff, answer that question.
Commissioners, this is Sue Ann Donovan. Did you want me to address the 90 days?
Yeah, come, come, come back at me, Sue Ann, Jack. I'm sorry to bring you back on, but, so, yes, you just articulate why, just tell me this, why you see the neighbors being upset with 90 days.
I believe the neighbors are upset because they think that everybody gets a free pass during the 90 days. The fact of the matter is that during the 90 days, they don't have to worry about getting a variance to separation. It does not mean that the board automatically will grant the conditional use approval. The other issues that the neighbors can raise in front of the board are still valid. The conditions like, if they feel like it's a nuisance in the neighborhood because the double, the snow is in trouble, or the garbage isn't taken in correctly, or there's parking, or there's parties, or whatever it is, still gets raised in front of the Board of Adjustment. The board still gets to decide whether they should do that use approval based on what the behavior of that commercial short-term rental has been. The only thing that they don't have to do is seek a variance to the separation, which frankly makes it a lot easier for staff to figure out how to manage those applications when they come in. Because if you have two next to each other, within a block from each other, and one person
gets their application in 10 minutes before the second person, and the second person has to get the variance, and that's pretty hard to manage for the board and staff. But it doesn't mean that they get a free, a free ride, and that they don't have to meet the other, the other requirements, like being a good neighbor for the last years, off-street parking spaces, one in, one in the house instead of three units. There are other things that the board will consider when they decide to issue that use, that use approval. And I think maybe neighbors don't understand that that is, that's the case. That's how it's going to be reviewed in front of the board.
Yeah, your point is nobody gets a free lunch here.
Correct. Everybody has to go in and make their case as to why they should be given that opportunity to have a use, a use approval. And if they've been a bad actor for the last, when they were before the regulations, then that's going to be taken into consideration by the board.
And there's sufficient notice to the neighbors to enable them to raise hell, so to speak.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. The neighborhood group and neighbors within 250 feet will get notice, opportunity to be heard. They can send in cards, they can appear at the hearing, they will have ample opportunity to be heard when it goes before the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Sue Ann.
Yeah, Sue Ann, I have a question too. This is Jan. Can you talk about the density, like, why condos, apartments, why they have to have density requirements, but how does this affect, you know, density in neighborhoods?
If you're talking about the multifamily density, the 10% rule?
Yes.
That, there's, there's a sort of a worry, and it's been expressed in other communities, that short-term commercial rentals can drive up rental prices in communities, especially in multifamily units. So, if there's a cap and you can only do 10%, that's a way to cap driving up the rent prices. So, that's how we kind of try to balance that and not have too many short-term rentals within a multifamily unit to preserve the low income or the regular rental market.
Okay, okay. All right. Other questions? For Sue Ann? Okay, well, thank you for coming back, Sue Ann, because now, discussion. We don't have a motion yet, but I still think there should be more discussion. Does anyone have a concern about the 700-foot rule? Okay, discussion from the, or does someone want to propose a motion? Will?
I move staff recommendation, except for in item number five, which is the last bullet on page two, to strike 10 years and insert five years.
Okay, but you're fine with everything else?
I'm sorry, this is Jackie. So, Will, do you wish to delete the entire verbiage in number five?
Uh, no, I think that the, the verbiage would apply to any number of years that the number indicates. And I think it's important that there is a termination that is a date that this needs to be reviewed. Two, five years is what I'm suggesting.
Okay, so we have a motion. Tyler?
Rocky Sazado?
Oh, no.
Will Page?
Yes.
Jack Hummer? Emily Webb? Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Greg Wadia?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
And Abby Chunga? Motion for item number two carries 11-1.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're on item number three. A question from Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, represented by Tammy Creeks, for review and approval of a Type II design alternative in accordance with Chapter 135, Section 135-9.2.4, and 135-9.3.1.B, for property located at 1609 Washington Avenue, to allow a one-household house type D dwelling in an N5 neighborhood district to be constructed on the property without a garage. Catherine?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, passengers, passengers, and for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, this is a property that is being proposed by Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity to be built at 1609 Washington Avenue. It will be a one-household dwelling unit, and they are proposing to build it without a garage. You can see the location here, this is generally south and east, the intersection of MLK, north and southbound with Hickman Road. Couple of photos with some contact. This is the property to the west of 1609, progressing east toward Washington Avenue. Here's the site, straight on. Now, this is the property to the east of the building.
Catherine, we, you're breaking up substantially in your presentation. Are you speaking directly to the mic, or is it covered by something?
Is that a bit better?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Shall I start over?
If you could, real quickly.
So, as mentioned, here's the property at 1609 Washington Avenue. This is to the south and east of the intersection of Hickman Road with MLK. This is the property to the west of 1609, progressing down Washington Avenue. This is the subject property, straight on, and then property to the east of 1609. Let me just scroll down here to kind of the staff rationale. When we did the review of this project, we of course, how many parcels within the 250-foot area of the subject property had garages on them, and we identified 49, or excuse me, 49 parcels within the 250 feet. 28 of these properties, or 57%, meet the classification of either having a garage structure on it, or are vacant and assumed to have the required garage in the future if they were to be developed. And then, as you might have noticed in the photos of the site, the property to the west of 1609 does have a garage structure on it as well, that actually exceeds the minimum code requirement. While reviewing the proposed house for Habitat, we did, staff was able to grant a few Type I design alternatives, including a 14.6 reduction in the required finished floor area, a reduction of the required street tree in the Washington Avenue right away due to overhead utility lines, and a reduction of the overall required story height of the building. Staff does believe that it is necessary to have the required garage to provide necessary storage and to provide the future occupants with solid equity. It is also within character of the neighborhood to have a garage, and by not allowing, by agreeing to not have a garage, you're actually reducing the long, the character of the neighborhood's existing character and reducing the long-term appreciation and value for the property. And that's why we are denying the request for construction without a garage. Here is the site plan that we received from Habitat. You can see the driveway they are proposing on the east side of the property, the shaded areas, the proposed house, and then they are proposing a shed in the backyard. Here are the elevations that they've provided us with, just so you get a bit of context. It is a one-and-a-half-story house. You can see the two gables and the porch, and then you can see the outline of the roof, of the half-story roof behind it. We also received a narrative from Habitat. I'll zoom in a little bit. As to the reason, the rationale for their request to build without the garage. I can come back to this if needed. They've also provided us with a map of their own review of garages in the neighborhood. They've gone further beyond the 250-foot, and I believe this is in Mr. Henning's presentation that he'll be getting to later, so this will be revisited. And then, we did not receive any cards back in support or opposition of this project or this request. And that concludes my presentation at this time. And then, Mr. Henning, I know, is on the call, and I'll be clicking through his presentation.
Thank you, Catherine. Questions for Catherine, from the Commission? Hey, thank you, Catherine. Um, questions for Catherine from the Commission?
Yeah, hi, this is, uh, Greg. Uh, can you tell me what the area of the home is? You mentioned the reduction that was approved. Cause it, was it a basement or a partial basement? What was the required area? What is their area? I couldn't find it on their plan.
Um, see if I can remember off the top of my head. Uh, it was a 14.6% reduction, but I want to say that equals about 52 square feet, if I recall correctly. And I believe Mr. Henning will probably have those numbers to confirm or deny if I'm correct.
Any other questions for Catherine? Okay, thank you. Is a, a applicant here online? Yes. Mr. Henning?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you, members of the Commission. Uh, I'm Lance Henning. I serve as Executive Director of Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity. We're located at 2200 East Euclid, and appreciate your consideration on the relief from the garage requirement. You can go to the next slide on there. So this would be, uh, an example of what the house would look like. Uh, it would be proposed, uh, that we've, have built this in other places across the community, and it will be sold to a low-income family earning less than 60% of the area median income. I believe the Commission is familiar with our program. Just a reminder that all the homebuyers do go through a homebuyer's education. They do sweat equity as part of that, and Habitat provides an affordable mortgage, uh, for the homebuyer as part of that. Next slide. Uh, these are the houses that would be to the left and right, or so to the west and east of the, uh, proposed Habitat home on here. So, uh, those houses, one does have a garage, one does not, and the Habitat house itself is 1100, uh, 10 square feet. It is a story and a half, three-bedroom, and then it has a partial basement. So the front portion of the house sits on a slab, and then it goes into kind of the split level, and there's a basement underneath that aspect over there. Also, straight across the street, so if you look at the three lots, straight across the street, one of those homes of the three has a garage, uh, across the street on there. Next slide. Uh, we do believe that the character of the neighborhood is one that has a few garages. Uh, so you can go ahead into the next slide. And in this here, so, in that survey, so you can see the blue in the middle on there is the location of the 1609 Washington property that we're talking about. Uh, the pink is roughly the 250, uh, foot radius around there, and then the orange would be a broader context. So you can see the property itself is in the heart of the neighborhood. Uh, so looking in that broader on there, there was 389 properties surveyed on there. Uh, 60.9% of those have no garage, um, as part of that. So it is pretty common through that neighborhood that, uh, the houses do not have a garage as part of that. Next slide. So just, uh, in that 250-foot radius, that, uh, it does, if you, if you look at the vacant properties, then it does get to that 57%. Um, so the actual existence of garages around there is less than 50% of the existing garages on there. Next slide. Uh, the, many of the garages that are in the area are in, um, pretty, uh, shabby condition, what they're able to do on there. So that's, uh, roughly across that 380-some houses, that 20% of those garages were below normal, poor condition. Within the 250-foot radius, uh, 30% of those were below normal or poor condition on there. Uh, we do believe we have adequate storage. Uh, there is the 120-foot square foot shed. The basement is unfinished. Uh, there's 489 square feet of basement, uh, in there, so there is 609 square feet of storage, um, that is available as part of that aspect there. Next slide. The, just, uh, and where this house plan plays out on there, so, uh, in houses, uh, with the same plan that we have completed in the last six months, the appraisals have ranged from 140,000 to 196,000, dependent on their location. Um, so if we put the, the Washington address at the 140,000 value, um, we hope that would be slightly above that. The average assessed value in that 250-foot radius around there is about $56,000, uh, on there. So if you look at that, uh, what is proposed with no garage is two-and-a-half times greater than the average value in the neighborhood on there. Um, so adding additional amenities to this, uh, property, if this, if this average neighborhood, if the average values were 200,000, this would be, uh, a, similar to asking a, if, if the neighborhood is at 200,000 as an average value, it would be similar to asking for a $500,000 house to be adding amenities. So something, uh, like extending out for more garage space, or adding brick, or some aspect on there. So, uh, it is adding value to the neighborhood, it is adding value to the immediate properties around there, it is a benefit to the neighborhood, um, throughout there. Um, just on that $140,000 appraisal on there, it'll cost us about 165,000 to build the home, and then we will spend probably another $50,000, uh, working with the family on all the aspects of, uh, bringing the family into the program, working them through the program, and getting them through the purchase of the home on there. So there is some significant investment going on all through that aspect, um, and the neighborhood benefits through, from all that aspect on there. That's, uh, that's the key pieces that we wanted to bring up this evening on there, and we do, uh, you can just put that last slide on there, and we do say thank you for your consideration to be able to, uh, help create the relief, um, and reduce that garage requirement.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here, or any questions for the applicant from the Commission?
May I ask a question, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Lance, uh, just to clarify, so, uh, your, your calculation showed the vacant lots not having garages in your, in your calculation. The code says we have to count those, um, so that is part of the reason for the staff recommendation of denial, is that our code does require us to count vacant lots as assumed to have a garage.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand. That's why, I understand where your calculation on there. When you take those vacant lots out, it is below 50%. So that's, I just wanted to make sure folks understood that vacant lots put that over the 50%.
Other questions for Lance? Okay, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the applicant? All right. Uh, anyone here to speak in opposition of the request? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and it's time for Commission discussion. Commission?
Um, this is Emily Webb. So I was kind of questioning the need for this, um, the garage requirement while we were discussing this code back in December, whenever it was. So, and it was for this very reason I was worried about the garage requirement. So I, I would be in favor of removing it for this instance.
Thanks, Emily. Um, Rocky would like to speak. I think he needs to be unmuted?
No, Jan, I was just trying to get unmuted. I support what Emily said.
Oh, okay. Well, it's good to hear, though. So you support what Emily just said?
Yep.
Okay.
I think she should make a motion.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Um, Tyler?
Will Page?
Yes.
Jack Helms?
Aye.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Greg Wadier?
Yes.
Abby Chunga?
Yes.
And Rocky Sazado?
Yes.
Motion for item number three carries 11-0.
Okay, thank you.
No garage.
Um, that- Excuse me, um, this is Jackie. Um, Tyler, could you rephrase? Could you repeat?
The motion?
Your characterization, yeah, the motion. I did-
Uh, the motion, the motion to approve the request of type-two design, right on number three, passes 11-0.
But there's no garage.
Right. I, in my mind-
Yeah.
The motion was to, um-
Remove the requirement.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. But I, I defer to, you know, maybe what legal says it should say.
Yeah, so this is Glenna Frank, um, of the Legal Department, and the item in front of you was for a type-two design alternative to allow no garage. So if you want to allow them to not have a garage, you voted to approve that request for the type-two design alternative.
Okay. So we accomplished what we wanted. Okay.
It was just the way it was worded, kind of.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you were voting for no garage, right, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Um, I think we're, that's the end of the meeting. Is there, are there, is there a committee or director's report, Mike?
No, uh, thank you very much. Uh, another great meeting. Uh, thank you for your, uh, patience in trying to work through the, the technology. Um, the governor's proclamation has been extended, I believe, till May 27th, so your next meeting will also be, um, via Zoom, and we will then decide where we go from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone. Thanks to staff. They're doing a great job of preparing materials and, and making it, uh, workable for the rest of it. So thank you.
Thanks, Jan. Bye-bye.